What we're essentially doing is ending his current contract and creating a new three-year contract. So there's no changes in it. We discussed that at our workshop, but of course, we couldn't vote on it. So we have that contract before us tonight. So I'll entertain a motion to approve this new contract, three-year extension for Dr. Parrott.
So move.
Madam President, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I actually think that under the statute, we have to do it as an extension as opposed to a new contract unless we go through an additional evaluation process.
Yeah, I said it was an extension, but it is essentially, I mean, we're ending the current contract. It is an extension of three years. So, I mean, how do you say it without?
What you do is you would let, because your contract expires what day?
June 30th.
I think technically, you say that you would do an extension to begin for two years on July the first without having to execute a new, because if we execute a new contract, there's an additional 30-day waiting period that we do, but we can extend an existing contract with no changes, but we're not replacing his current contract. It has to finish out its normal term, it has to kind of die.
It will extend through June 30th, 2028.
So we're just, okay. Well, that's what I was told.
That sounds silly.
Okay, I know, I know, and I've heard two different things, that we couldn't extend his current contract, but essentially, we are.
Can't extend it beyond four years at any given time.
Right. So, okay. So, he's going to stay with us three more years, is what this contract says, so. Does that clear his mind for everybody? All right, is there any discussion about, when we had a motion?
I had a motion.
A motion to approve, and a second to approve the contract with just a change in the date. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That is done, and we will be adjourned as a special session. Now, let me call a regular meeting to order. Before we do our pledge of allegiance, I'd like us to stand and then have a moment of silence for the Tipton County Schools. They had a teacher commit suicide today, so we want to take a moment to remember the Tipton County Schools before our pledge. Thank you. Mr. Bell?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no guests here tonight, I don't think, and no resolutions? No resolutions, all right. No one registered to be heard for anything that is on the agenda, so we'll move, or yeah, persons to be heard for items on the agenda that will move on to approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That's done. Approval of the consent agenda. That includes minutes from the last meeting, human resources report, student services report, field trips, our expenditure report, all the policies for second reading, and golf schedule.
I move we approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion, second, approve consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All righty. Executive approval, we did have one, and that was the outcome incentives that we talked about last month, and those were the monies that go to the schools based on different incentives. Yeah, it's in there that shows all that. We were supposed to vote on that, and we did not, but it needed to get approved, so the executive committee approved that, but I'll need a motion that we approve those incentives.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Everybody know what we're doing. We're just, we should have voted on it last month, and we didn't, but it needs to be done. Any other discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That is done. Only comments I have, I wanted to do a shout-out for the Anderson County Education Foundation for the Teacher of the Year banquet last week. It was a good event, and we appreciate all the things that the foundation does for us. Also, I want to announce this week, the death of Peggy Hayes, who was a school board member for, I think, two terms, eight years, sat in this seat from the sixth district. So she passed away this week, so we want to remember her and her family. Moving on to the above and beyond awards. Those were the special area teachers, and those were celebrated in the schools this month, which takes us on to perfect attendance. You should have folks on a list in front of you. So, Mr. Carden.
From Claxton Elementary, we have Kennedy Walden.
Anderson County High School, Katie Urida.
Lake City Middle School, Charity Engels.
From Clinton High School, we have Melissa Fay. And from the nursing, we have Malana Beal.
From Claxton Elementary, Marley Blevins.
From preschool, we have Abby Kuesler.
From ACCT, we have Michael Gorman.
And from the food service department, we had Wendy Evans.
And Lake City Elementary, Marshall Violet.
All right. Congratulations to all those folks. They were perfect attendance. We'll move on to comments from the student board members. Keaton is not here tonight. I'm not going to steal his thunder. He's not here tonight, so, but he has a really good reason. So, Mary Ann, we will hear you gladly.
Okay. Everyone is super excited for spring break, and today we gave tours to the eighth graders of Lake City Norris Middle School, and along with some from Campbell County, and those who are homeschooled. And it was super fun. There was a lot of events. We had a pep rally, and it's just good to get them athleisure into the high school. And ACCTC also gave tours specialized to them and their, like, individual fields of studies. We picked seniors' relatives, and for the future, Student Spotlight is on April 17th, which is a good event to see what's happening within classrooms themselves, so I invite you guys to that. And for athletics, baseball, softball, and soccer are all having strong seasons so far. We're also doing spring girls' flag football, which we did in the winter, and it was freezing, but we moved it to spring, and baseball was predicted to be in the top 10 in the region in the starting poll by the East Tennessee Baseball Football Association.
All right. Thanks so much. Moving on to director's report.
Okay. Mr. Gillam Waters, I'd ask you, I'd had some people that had wanted us, we'd been working on Claxton School for a long time, and wanted to just kind of get where we were at on everything, so I thought the easiest way to do it was to get it on a live TV show and just go over it and kind of go through everything. So I will be, I'll be as brief as I can, but I want to get it out there. So, the school board had been planning for the school for over 10 years. It focused on completing capital projects ahead of schedule, and, you know, the Anderson County Commission voted about nine years ago to put funds in a 177 account, and that's allowed us to address all of our construction processes and everything we needed beyond this school. And I want to really thank the maintenance staff and what hard work they've done to get this to reality. The school system's in a good place and a position to build a school, and it's time. Claxton community is a vital part of Anderson County and deserves a school that meets the needs of every student in that district. Research has shown that a learning environment has a very positive impact on student success. And if you've got, if you've ever been in a classroom when it's cold, or it's drafty, or there's a bucket over in the corner when it's leaking, or the bathrooms don't work, you deal with that, and it takes away from the learning environment. So, the present Claxton School, somebody asked, well, let's just fix that school up. Well, here's some things. The present school's been updated five times over the years. Some of the buildings are not 88 accessible, and they can't be. A student has to go outside in the weather to get to some of our buildings. It's an ongoing, has ongoing structural issues. We have a classroom that, sometimes it's a good classroom, sometimes it's a pond, and we can't figure out why it is, but that's what happens to it. So we have to move that classroom, you can't use it. We have electrical and water issues. It's an old building. It has four separate buildings. That's a safety concern. Students have been locked outside of these buildings. That's the reason the buildings were built and not adjacent to the main building, because if you had done that, you would have had to update all the buildings, and it would have cost a whole lot more money. One of these issues right now, we have to have a plumbing company come out about every two weeks and clean the pipes out, because the old school had concrete sewer pipes in, and they're just dissolving over the years. The school's sitting on the corner of a busy intersection. We just found out tonight that this new road going through, it will take a plum up to the door of the cafeteria.
Wow.
There's not enough parking. Any renovations, like we say, would require everything to come up from codes. The oldest building with the most needs in this district, and some parts date back to the early 1900s. 1913, I think, is what that sign says.
God. What was it like back in 1913?
I have no idea. I was just a young toddler then. And it cost almost as much to update and build that new school as it would to build a new one, and then where do you house the students while you're building? It's a two-year project. So, so here's kind of the timeline. In February 2015, Anderson County School Board approved to build a new school in Claxton in a five-year strategic plan. It'd been talked about for years. In February '20, the school board, at the board retreat, started the process to build a new school. They updated the five-year plan, and if you remember what happened in March, COVID hit. Everything stopped. 2022, we started the process again for the new school. During that time, we had been working with TVA. Tracy Wondell was a big proponent of seeing if we could work with TVA and get them to donate us some land off of New Henderson. They had bought a big farm out there. At that time, TVA was talking about closing the steam plant and didn't know what they were going to do with that land. So, we had a few meetings with that, and after about a year, we had decided that that process probably wasn't going to come to fruition. In May '23, the school board and county commission approved appropriation to purchase the land for the new Claxton School. I truly believe it was a church, and I truly believe it was a God thing, because there would, we had looked all over Claxton, and there was nobody willing to sell us enough land to build a new school. I mean, we tried, didn't we, Ms. Williams? But in August '23, the land was purchased as complete, 2 million, 3 million, 3.2 million came from regular budget. It was the Old Crossroads Christ Fellowship Church, sitting on 32 acres. In September of '23, we hired MBI companies to design the new school. February of '24, the contract with MBI to be approved by commission for 1.6 million out of the regular budget, and that was for the design and all the architectural studies, things like that. Building a school, you just don't go out, it's like building a house. You have to go out, and you have to have the land survey. You have to know if there was any Indians burial ground on there, if there were any caves, if there are any endangered species, and we had to have all of these surveys done to make sure we could build the school there. October 23rd, there was this traffic study done by Cannon and Cannon, and it showed that we needed to purchase land for a driveway off of Raccoon Valley. Ms. Williams knew that the day we started talking about this, but we wanted to make sure that we were doing it the right way, but I think that that's going to be a great thing. The land was purchased, and we'll go on. Life Development Center, it is amazing how things fall in place. We had a piece of property at the Life Development Center that we didn't use anymore, that was really just costing us money, and Oak Ridge, the city of Oak Ridge, come to us and said, hey, we would like to purchase that land, and pretty much to the dollars, what they gave us for the land is what we purchased that driveway for. January through September, we started having meetings. When we first started looking at this, we were looking at doing a USDA loan, but when it really got down to the design work, it was going to be about a two- to three-year process before they would approve the loan, and we knew we didn't have that much time. So, it was, we met with the principal, we met with Ms. Coleman, we met with, and she and her staff, really and truly, we would give them the design, they would come back, and it'd have marks all over it, it'd have 45 sticky notes on it, and we would get with the MBI, and we would cipher it out, and we'd go back and say, okay, what's this? So we went back and forth to make sure we got it right. September 24th, we had the first community meeting on the new project to get input. We had over 100 people in attendance. Everybody liked the design. The only thing that come out of that meeting that was a change is they wanted the old Claxton sign that's in front of the school incorporating it to the new project somehow, and we've done that. October of '24, MBI completed the design on the new school. And like I said, there's been so much input on this about the colors and about everything. Ms. Coleman and her staff has really just jumped on board and said, okay, here's what we want you to do. Tell us what you want in a school, and we'll figure out if we can afford it or not. And there were some things that we could, and some things that, but after doing it, we really had everything they wanted. You know, we can put a sink in a classroom right now for about $250 extra. If you build the building, it costs you about $40,000 to put that sink in, so we want to make sure if you need a sink in a classroom, we do it before. The existing building there will be repurposed for the gym and the cafeteria. That existing building is 100 by 200, it's about 20,000 square feet, and it was appraised at $4 million, that building. So, we give three for the building, for the land and the 30 acres, and got a $4 million building in the process. The new building will be 64,000 square feet. There's pictures of it right here in the front, for a total of 84,000 square feet. October 24th, October of '24, the Anderson County Financial Management Committee approved $20 million in rural elementary school bonds to build this school. October '24, county commission approved the school bonds. In December 24th through February 25th, we had a company demolish the whole interior of the existing building. It was a, the church, it had an auditorium, it had a cafeteria, and had two stories, but it was all built out of wood, and it didn't do our purpose. So we had that all demolition, and on February 25th, the school went out for bids. The estimated cost was $27,911. February of '25, 2025, the bids opened, four companies bid on it. Merritt Construction, Horner Building Company, Blaine Construction Incorporated, and Jenkins and Style LLC, which all of these are great companies that have done a lot of work, extensive work in schools. On February of 2025, Merritt Construction was the low bid at $28,474. We have been working with the contractor to finalize the design and to cut costs, and we're looking at a cost of about $27,600. Now, in that $27,600, there's a $1.2 million contingency fund for overruns, for if we have to make change work orders, things like that. That's the thing that we've got to make sure, and I think yours will let me be that lead tonight, is that you've got to have somebody that's over there every day looking at it and making sure, because you don't want to get too far into it, and they say, oh, you should have told us this six months ago, now it's going to cost you an extra hack million dollars. So, we've got to stay on top of it. The start date is April the 1st, and we are going to have a grand groundbreaking on April the 2nd at 3:00 on that site. The Chamber of Commerce is working with us on that, and Mr. Myers is working on getting us some shovels and getting them painted, and we're going to have a glorious day that day. The completion date, it's going to take 672 days from the signed contract, which will be February of '27. People ask about funding, because as you know, the estimated cost was $27,600. Funding through the bond issue of 20 million. Almost all the elementary school debt is paid through the school system, and the reason it's the time to build this school is we've got a debt service that's falling off, and then the new one comes on. So, the only difference between what we're going to be paying for the building and in new money, really, is about $2.8 million over six years. The present payment right now, we pay $1,730, $1,730,512. We hope the old school property will sell. County commission has approved that we can sell that school and take those proceeds and use for the new school. We've estimated that to be about $3.5 to $4 million. The regular budget over three years, we're going to take $1 million out of the regular budget, because we have $1 million in there every year for capital outlays, so we're going to take about a third of that over three years. That way, we still got money to do other stuff with. The 177 capital project fund, we're going to, we're going to fund that over three years, $3 million. We have a million and a half in there right now. We've been saving that money up because we knew this project was coming. General purpose school fund, we're going to take $2 million over the next three years. We have right now in our fund balance, we've got $10,739,372, and we believe that $2 million out of that over the next three years will be, be pretty easy to do. So, and that will make a total of $30 million. That gives us a little, about a $2.4 million leeway in there, because the two things that are not in that bid is playground equipment and furniture. And so, those are things we're hoping if we don't have a lot of change work orders, we've got a million-two sitting there, we can use that, but if we don't, we want to have something to fall back on. Here's the one thing that I ask all the time, the school does not require a tax increase, and we don't take funds from academic programs to take care of it. And that's the thing that, if you know me, I love numbers. If you come in my office, I have things sitting all over the place. Sometimes Marcus, Judy used to get on me, because I'd come in and say, yeah, this is what we're going to do, and I'm like selling. When I'm selling, it's high, and when I'm buying, it's low. But somewhere, we have to meet in the middle, but this school system needs this school, this school, you all have approved this school. It's not something that we just set out to do. It really upsets me when somebody says the only reason we're building this school is Dr. Parrott wants his name on a building. You know, listen, I don't have to have my name on any building, but I grew up in that community. This board built a new school in that area. They built South Clinton Elementary School 30 years ago, and we give it to Clinton City, and we didn't do anything for Claxton, and now it's time to do it for Claxton. So, that's why we're doing it. If anybody has any questions, it's an open book. Everything we've done's been across board, from the design work, from the starting of it, to when we bought the land, everything we've done above board, and I'm excited about it. I can't wait till the groundbreaking. If you go by there, there's a brand-new bulldozer sitting there that I won't, hopefully, they may let me try it out. That's on my bucket list, so. Any questions from the board?
Jim, the thing that, because I've been here for the whole duration from the beginning of the talking part, I think Joe should be recognized for how well she has supported her community through this.
Yes.
This has been something she has worked tirelessly on, same thing with Tracy Wondell. The two of them have been so focused on their district and doing it without a tax increase to the people by being patient and planning it. I think you should be complimented for, and I believe that this school will anchor, along with that Aspire Park, a whole redevelopment of that end of the county, and I think you're going to see a growth that comes in the southern part of our county, in the Claxton area, because people will want to move to come to a new school. That Aspire Park is taking off. I think this is great, a win for everybody in the county.
Yes.
So I think you, Joe, Tracy, should all three be counted.
Thanks. And that?
Could I say something? I am so happy that we've got that much acreage. I mean, most of our schools are just tied wherever they are, and this time, we got room to do things that we need to do.
Yes. And if we, if we will have, we'll have some open land down front of there, and some things like that, and some things back on the back of the hill. That was one thing, that there's about a savings of almost $300,000, I think somewhere in the neighborhood of that, because in the design work, there was a, they were going to put a retaining wall behind, because you drive behind the school, and so when they come out and started surveying it, and got with the architect and got with the contractor, they said, hey, you've got so much land, we could stair-step this back, and you don't really need that retaining wall. And with that, you know, because we weren't landlocked, it saved us $300,000. So, it's a good deal.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate the choir, I think. We certainly don't need to be convinced, but, and I think if there was a better way to do it a more transparent way, I can't think of it, because I think we've been wide open and been, you know, very, very transparent in everything we've done it all along, so, and will continue to be.
Yes.
So, anything else from your report?
Nope.
It's all you wanted to say?
I will say, thanks, teachers and staff, and you made it to spring break. Take a week off and then come back and put your head down, get ready for T-Caps.
I'll talk to you.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. We will move on to the action items from the workshop. First one is financial report.
Yes. We went over the financial report on Monday night. The 1A, 1A, B, and C is from our general purpose. It's about Scodio Supplies. We're going to hire a speech pathologist, and there was a donation from the Educational Foundation, A, B, and C, and then D through K, we went over those. Those are all appropriations, either an increase or a decrease, that we do every year from the federal allocations, from Title I, Title II-A, Title I Neglected, Title II-A, Title III, IDA Part B, and IDA Part Preschool. And then 1J is just to correct the duplicate appropriations for the paid parental leave.
All right. So questions about any of those? Not all, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion, we approve appropriations 1A through 1K.
Yep, that's a K. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and second, any discussion? Not, roll call vote?
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Mr. Gillam Waters?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Portwood?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers, we had, they were all federal and preschool. The biggest part of it is trying to, we talked about getting budgets in line, getting close. We're eight months into the 12-month year, you know, and so they are 2A through 2E, if you have any questions.
All right. Is there a motion to approve transfers?
So moved.
Motion and second, approve transfers 2A through 2E. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. We'll do the rest of that later, the budgets and all. Okay. Moving on to our board attorney, as you know, we lost our board attorney, South Barcelona, tragically, in a car accident. His, and we discussed this at our retreat, his partner, Elizabeth Burl, is, knows as much as anybody about what we're doing here in the school, and has been doing part of that work. So I'll entertain a motion if...
I move we hire Elizabeth Burl as our Board of Education Attorney.
Second.
There's a motion and second to hire Elizabeth Burl as the Board of Education Attorney. Any discussion? Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? That is done. The other thing we discussed at our workshop was the need for a construction supervisor for Claxton School. During that workshop, we discussed that we could designate Dr. Parrott as the project manager for that school, which would allow him to work with the contractor and MBI, Michael Brady, to approve all the changes and work orders within the bid scope. He will give the school board a monthly report on the progress, any changes, and he will be required to visit the new school site as needed to oversee the construction, and we, he will be compensated for these extra duties, and we will hold him accountable if he messes anything up, so.
Exactly right.
So, we discussed that. If you are willing to enter into that agreement with Dr. Parrott, I will entertain a motion to appoint him as the contract manager for Claxton School.
Second.
All right. Motion and second to appoint Dr. Parrott as the contract manager for the new Claxton School. Is there a discussion?
Which budget code will the staff, or that won't be a staff and the payment come from?
Differentiated pay.
That's differentiated pay.
Yeah. It's already in there.
Could we put that in the motion? No?
No, because it won't be part of my regular salary.
Yeah. Do you want that put in there, that it comes from different G P?
It would make it more clear where it's coming from.
Yep, that's fine with me.
Right. Any other discussion? And who made that motion? You made the motion. Are you okay with that change?
Second.
Second, okay with that change? Okay. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Thank you. Then we got some policies for, one policy for first reading and honorific classifications.
We took out the reaching all four benchmarks and just says, it says now as well as reaching all benchmarks, because there may be a time that they pull out science, so there's only three benchmarks. So, we wanted to make sure if they either, if they take science or not take science, it makes the same, makes it to sign.
Makes sense.
All right. We like policies to make sense.
Yes.
Not be too complicated.
Yep.
All right. Is there a motion to approve that change?
I'll move we approve policy 4.602.
Second.
Motion.
On first reading, right?
Yep.
On first reading, yeah.
So, there's a motion to approve policy 4.602, honorific classification on first reading. Is there a discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? All right. Item F, or is all the head start delegate budgets, there's budget detail, there's plans, everything we talked about Monday night, you can see them listed there. Alphabet soup. I know what all those stand for.
Exactly.
We do all these.
We can approve all these at once.
Is G part of that, or G something?
No, no, we've already done, G's what you already did. We just put that on there so you would know what those incentives were.
Okay, thank you.
You don't have to approve that. You already did that in executive orders.
Oh, so it's just A through F and H?
A through K. Approve them all at the same time, you said?
Could I make a motion that we approve head start items A through K, and that the policy council did approve that this morning?
They did.
It's good to go.
Yep. We're rubber stamping what they've already approved.
That's right.
Any discussion on any of those? We did talk about those Monday night, so.
And they talked about them this morning.
That's right. So, all right. I have a motion. Did I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? That is done. And then the outcome incentives was handled under executive approval. Any other items to come before the board tonight? Are there persons here to be heard on anything that's not on the agenda? Is our new item part of our transparency? I do not see anyone. All right. If there's nothing else, we'll be adjourned.
One quick question.
Wait, there is somebody who wants to speak.
They did, this week, I think on Monday, the TWS double A approved the one-time transfer rule, and they are throwing that to the, it's going to go into effect next school year, and the local boards of education are supposed to come up with their own individual policy, because obviously, it can affect your numbers depending on where you go. So, just to give you all a head start, to be thinking about that, we probably need to have a policy by transfer time when the portal opens up.
Now, the one I, the one, it's still, though, they can't be for athletic reasons, right?
Well, but it's, yes, but everybody's going to say it's for a personal reason. I mean, yeah, that can, it can be, I was bullied. It can be anything. I guarantee you, some stud football player comes out, they're going to say, oh, he was being treated poorly. So, tell Oak Ridge High School we're open for business.
All right. We'll get working on that. Anything else? Not, we'll be adjourned. Thanks all.
I was going to take the church.